Okay, you're good to start.
I was gonna say, my electronics all think we're up and running. This is Craig Bevan, this is the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission on first Wednesday in March 2021. Determination of the Planning Commission Chair concerning an anchor location pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52 dot four dot two oh seven dot four. The undersigned Chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meeting at a public commission within thirty days after this date to be an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health, safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global plant pandemic currently exists relating to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the safety of those, health and safety of those who may be present at this location. This is signed by Christine Coots, I'd be happy to sign that if you need me to, although she can typically put that in place.
Thank you, hopefully her and Jesse are able to join. We'll plan to just run through the agenda items, but first I think we want to start by introducing Lucy Anderson. She was, and Chris is finally on, so that's great. So Lucy was appointed by the council last night as a, as our new planning commissioner. She's going to serve as an alternate member. And then Bob Wild, who was previously the alternate, is going to be serving as a regular member. But, but we're excited to welcome Lucy, so maybe just Lucy, if you don't mind, just take a minute or two and introduce yourself to the commission and maybe we can go around quick and do just some brief introductions.
Sure, um, hi everyone, and first of all apologies that I'm having to dial in on my cellphone, which isn't great, so apologies for that, my internet's down. But I am excited to join the planning commission, I've lived in Cottonwood Heights for about twenty-three years and look forward to working with everyone.
Great, thank you, Chris, I'll just defer to you at this point, since you made it on, thank you. But we've got just the two agenda items, if you'd like, we can, we can roll through that if you have any other questions.
I think that's fine, did you do the, the, all the official anchor location?
Yes, Commissioner Bevan covered us there.
Oh, I, I read that very carefully.
Excellent, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I'm actually gonna, I'm in the car right now, so Andy's gonna do most of the talking tonight, he's got all the information.
Sure, well, we can just dive right in if you want to review the items. So let me begin sharing my screen again, but we have two items on today's business meeting agenda. The first one is a site plan, site plan approval for a new financial institution, it's a Utah first federal credit union branch at eleven sixty-six East Fort Union Boulevard. And then the second item is continuation from our last meeting, public hearing to receive comments on the parks, trails and open space master plan. So I'll just give a brief overview here, and then you can ask any questions that you have. I did see the architect working on our first item, so they should be available as well if you have questions for the applicant. So, most of you would be familiar with the property, this is the old famous Dave's property at eleven sixty-six East Fort Union Boulevard. It was rezoned last year, I think in November. Yeah, October Planning Commission and November the city council approved the rezone to mixed use. What's being requested is site plan approval for a new financial institution, it's a new credit union branch. This is actually a permitted use, financial institutions are permitted use in the mixed use zone, so we're not doing a conditional use hearing, but the mixed use zone does specifically require new developments to come before the planning commission for site plan review. So that's why we're here tonight. It has been reviewed by the Architectural Review Commission, they had a meeting last week and approved it, and we'll go over their conditions. But just to give you a little bit of an overview, so it's a completely new building here in place of where famous Dave's used to be. They've submitted some renderings, give you a sense of what it will look like, here's one three D rendering looking kind of to the east. And then another angle from the other side looking west. Give you a sense of what this will look like when all is said and done. Quick review of some of the basics, site plan, on the left is the aerial view of what's there now, famous Dave's building, on the right you can see the proposed site plan. So it's a little bit of a smaller building. I don't remember the exact square footage, I think it's like three thousand and so, some change square feet. But significantly smaller than what's there. About half the size of the existing building, but they are proposing drive-through, three lane drive-through. A few other notes on the site plan, the main entrance and exit area is being widened. You can see on the left that it's about two lanes wide, so they're adding enough space for an extra lane. That was, what I've been told is a collaboration between the property owner and the adjacent owner of the office space who shares this entrance and parking lot. That was something that was requested that they were happy to provide. And then the one way out to the east is remaining in place, and that will be the exit for the drive-through customers. Site plan's been reviewed preliminarily by staff. It meets the setbacks, so they're not requesting any sort of setback reduction. It's a single-story building, so there's no height exception. And has been found to be compliant with the requirements of the mixed use code. Some of the things that the city will be requiring is wider sidewalks. As you know, this is on Fort Union, our, part of our Fort Union plan is to get wider sidewalks and bike lanes. And we've actually got a plan as part of the Mid Valley Act of Transportation Plan, this is not necessarily being discussed tonight, but we do have plans to add bike lanes in the shoulder along this segment of Fort Union. So we didn't request the bike lanes to be behind the curb in this case, but we would like to see the sidewalk expanded to meet the goals of our Fort Union Boulevard master plan. And then there is this pedestrian connection here from the sidewalk to the front entrance, and then connecting down through to the office building. A few other things from your packet parking plan, a building of this size, a drive-in bank. The requirement is thirteen parking stalls. In this case, the property owner, there are several parcels, for those of you who are here for a rezone, you'll remember that we only rezones the main parcel with the building on it, but they actually own four of the parcels, three of which are parking stalls, so they have seventy-four parking stalls total, which is well beyond what's required. Majority of those are shared though with the adjacent office building. Five new stalls on the actual building site. Two of those are the handicapped parking stalls. And if we go back, you can see on the previous or existing site plan, the handicap stalls are across the accessway. And so those are being moved closer to the building, which should be improvement. For landscaping, I tried to kind of color code which trees are being proposed where, and I'm not an expert on the different varieties of trees, but I Googled some images just to give you a sense of what types of trees are proposed. As I mentioned, the Architectural Review Commission reviewed this application last week. One of their recommendations was to move these street trees, the ones highlighted in red, to behind the sidewalk. The reason for that is that it's actually a pretty narrow park strip. narrower than usual, it looked to be about four feet. And our new street tree requirements recommend that when it's a narrow park strip like that, four feet or less, that the trees be moved behind the sidewalk to allow more space. So that's one of the recommendations, otherwise landscaping plan was approved by the ARC. Worth noting that there are some existing trees along the creek side here on the east side, and those are proposed to be, to remain. And then just a number of different types of shrubs and grasses throughout. The lighting plan. You can see on the right cut sheet of illustration showing what the proposed specs are for the new light poles. The design guidelines recommend that parking lot lighting not exceed eighteen feet tall. And that's what the Architecture Review Commission approves. And then on the left side, you can see I've highlighted the points where the lights proposed. There was an existing light pole here in the parking lot that will be relocated just over as this access drive is widened. But those are proposed to remain the same style as existing. City code also requires new streetlight, so we are requiring one additional streetlight along Fort Union Boulevard frontage. Here are some elevations showing the different materials, so mixture of aluminum composite material. The windows porcelain rain screen is the white material. And then there's this custom orange three form resin pen, these are the internally lit features that are proposed as part of the building where the business logos will be. A modern-looking building. Different materials being proposed throughout. And then just for some context, the architect sent some photos of another recently completed branch with very similar design. This is in Farmington, so a few photos just to give you a sense of what it might look like. As you can see, there is this resin feature that's internally lit as the sign for the thing, or credit. Some images of the drive-through should be pretty similar to what's being proposed. Last week, the ARC issued a certificate of design compliance, so they reviewed all of this, discussed with the applicant. What they recommended was that the sidewalk along Fort Union be widened to six feet, that they add a streetlight along the frontage, parking lots not to exceed eighteen feet in height. No street trees along Fort Union will be planted within thirty feet of the drive-through exit. And I forgot to explain that as we went through, but if I go back just to explain, we wanted to make sure that as people are coming out and turning right, that they can look left and have a clear view of traffic. And so typically we require thirty feet there, so there's enough clear view space, so that's what that condition is. And then, as was discussed earlier, that they will relocate the trees behind the south, or to the south of the sidewalk behind it. As was mentioned before, so this is kind of different than what we usually do, typically we'll review with the planning commission conditional use permits where we require conditions to address potential negative impacts. In this case, really, a site plan review is an opportunity for the planning commission to review the project for compliance with the requirements of the code. We have conducted a review and found that it does comply with the applicable ordinances. We'll do a full technical review with engineering, public works, fire department. Will, at that point with the building permit, make sure that all technical items are addressed. But it is required from the planning commission to approve site plans for new developments in the mixed use zone, so that's why it's here tonight. So I think that's all we have for this one, I can maybe scroll to probably one of these three D images and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Andy, can you tell us a little bit more about those backlit signs and that discussion that took place with the ARC and, you know, realizing that there's multifamily residential to the north?
Sure, yeah, we, so that these, both of these orange features in the wall are this resin product that's internally lit. In the past, with planning commission meetings, we've had concerns from residents about lighting, so we want it to be sensitive. We initially recommended a nine PM shut-off time. The Architecture Review Commission had some discussion about that. They felt that essentially that, you know, it was a good quality design and that this location was not really immediately close to residential properties, there are some multifamily properties across the street. It's a wide right-of-way, I think it was close to two hundred feet or so when they measured to the nearest edge of residential building. So their discussion was just that they didn't have an issue with it and preferred to have those remain on at nighttime. I think they also had some comments about that the illumination could be a benefit just in general providing light to the area. So they elected not to keep that condition. And so I, I think, I don't think that we have a specific code requirement that requires lights to be turned off. It really would have been a design thing for them to review. So it, it's not something that, you know, we're recommending any additional conditions right now, but that was the discussion.
Well, I look at it and say, that's a lot of orange, and it, at night, if that's backlit, then it's really a lot of orange. I would have liked to know that there was one in Farmington and I could get in my little car and drive up there at night and see how that looks, and whether I'm offended by that.
Well, I like orange. I, I would second. Craig, I would second that, that I've worked with three form as a, as a client, and there's a range in terms of how thick the resin is and what the composition of the resin is, and also what the lighting source is behind it. And depending on how it's lit and the thickness and how it's designed, it can glow like a, like a night light, which I, I mean, it will, it will have a literal glow to it. But, but done carefully, it will be subtle and, you know, discreet and, and not obtrusive, so I I mean, I think Craig's suggestion to drive up and see exactly what the, what they had in mind and what they're using at their other locations seems wise to me, just to be safe.
Well, and I don't like to put things off again and again and again, I could deal with, if, I mean, if they want this approved right away, I could personally deal with it and say, yeah, turn it off at nine o'clock. Or after we see it, if it's not a, if it's not annoying, we'll let the city staff say, yeah, they comply for a variance and have it turned back on.
Andy, can you bring up that image from Farmington now? We can't be sure, as Dan explained, that it's exactly the same material as that building, but they had one, a night image there with that orange.
So what I, what I can say while you're looking this over is that all we really can do for this site plan review is ensure that it meets the code. We do have our new outdoor lighting standards, which have been recently adopted. They will have to submit a full lighting plan and comply with all of our requirements, which include things like the total site illumination, there's a certain number of lumens per acre that they can't exceed average illumination at grade level, so we will be checking all of this and ensuring that it doesn't exceed the maximums.
Well, but they're gonna get a lot of lumens because they own all that acreage, so to speak, they're gonna own the acreage out in the parking lot, and so they're gonna say, oh, well, we own this many acres, and so we get this many lumens.
Craig, this is Mike Johnson, I think the, the code is per parcel, and those are different parcels, so I think we're okay there.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm comfortable with doing it by parcel, but you know, when we looked at that originally, there was, they wanted to rezone all of their pieces, and I think came to a decent solution, and that is we'll rezone the one that needs to be, but we're not gonna rezone your parking lot. And, but if they wanna, but if they wanna tie that together and now say, I'm in, I'm entitled to two solar suns sitting out here because I'm, I have two acres, you know?
Yeah, so, so will that requirement be based on the, the actual parcel that this building sits on and not those parking lot pieces?
By the way, that's somebody really creepy in the bushes.
I will also share, there, there is another one of these buildings, I believe, the applicant will be in the business meeting and confirm. There is one in Quarry Bend in Sandy as well, that might save you a few miles.
Yeah, a lot.
But I, you know, I think at this point, our recommendation initially was to tie this to a design recommendation, which the ARC has some authority over. But other than, as Andy said, making sure it complies with our outdoor lighting ordinance, the, I think the only other recourse would be to request some sort of voluntary compliance with shutting those lights off at a certain time, if that is a concern.
Well, the other concern, look, lighting is, has become a big concern, I, I own a vacation home in Washington, Utah, that a near neighbor has turned on lights that are ridiculous. And I don't know that I would have even cared until being on this planning commission and recognizing that somebody else's lights are infringing on somebody else's enjoyment of their property. When we said that they're going to put in parking lot lights, Andy said they were gonna put in, move one and add one, and they were gonna put the same kind that they have in now. I know that our new ordinance doesn't allow you to put in the same kind of lights that you could put in sixteen or seventeen or twenty years ago when this was built. Does that mean they get to grandfather, we've got arc lights that are down there melting the paint off of cars? Or do the new lights, because I know we talked about this at the Hillside Plaza, for example, if you build a new place, you have to meet the lighting thing, our lighting ordinance. So do the new light poles that they put in, do they have to meet our lighting ordinance, or do they just have to replace what they have?
My general response is anything that's new needs to comply with our new ordinance. So I think any new light that they're showing, and probably even that relocated light, need, we need to verify that that meets our outdoor lighting ordinance.
Right, so these, the kind of L-shaped ones, you could see in that picture too, I think, right behind here. Those will all be reviewed as well for compliance with our outdoor lighting code. And then I think this, this one that's just being shipped over, I, I think.
And, and those are not what's currently down there.
The, the existing, this light, you're, you're saying that the, the existing parking lot is a different design?
Is a different, is a different design, and the light shines off of the property, it's not as well shaded and directed lighting as new lights, and we've got twenty years of technology to make this better. And, and so my question is, and it may not even be part of the planning and zoning, but my question is, can we, because we have a lighting in there, putting in some new lights, I'm looking at the one on the left, looks like there's one, two, three, four lights in yellow there. Or maybe, yeah, four new ones. Can, can we make sure those are up to our current standard? We can't do anything, we know we can't go back and make somebody change their lighting that they have, we understand that. But certainly when you're putting up a new light, we should be able to say it needs to conform with our lighting ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, the answer is yes, it's, it's not only can we, but we will require the change of use and new development, any newer relocated lights will be required to comply with our outdoor lighting ordinance.
Even though they may not match what's currently in the parking lot?
Yes.
Do you have any influence with Washington City?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
All right.
I have a, I've got another question for you, Andy. I, just with the, when we talk about the modification of the sidewalk, I'm, I'm grateful that we're thinking about the thank you for mentioning bikes, you knew I'd ask about that, but just with the, with the overlay of the Fort Union master plan, we, we request in both the commercial zone and in the, I, the community zone that it would be eight-foot sidewalks, and I'm wondering if there's a reason that we didn't move to eight-foot sidewalks if we're going to eliminate that park strip anyway. That was, that's my, my first question, and then my second question, especially in light of all the wonderful work that you and the committee have done talking about parks, this, this property butts right up against the little Cottonwood Creek property, that, I mean, I think is a beautiful, beautiful little piece. I'm not sure if this is the opportunity or not, but to encourage the property owner, is there, is there a way to consider a trail along that little Cottonwood Creek? It's such a, it's green space already as it is, and I know that there's an easement related to the, the water authority there, but the, the property owner is the next closest, and I don't know they would impinge on their, their parking situation per se. And then there's a little pocket piece behind, if you follow the creek up, a little corner grassy area that, as we're talking about pocket parks, this, this is kind of the beginning of little Cottonwood Creek, and I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity here with this property owner to, to do something that isn't terribly expensive, but in keeping with what our residents are asking for and isn't gonna be an enormous financial burden for the property owner, and also happens to be the gateway into Cottonwood Heights, so anyway, if you can address both of those for me, the Fort Union master plan, and then the possibility of doing something great with the, the fact that it's right on the little Cottonwood Creek, any thoughts or ideas?
I, I think that we are requesting six feet because that's what we requested on the two townhome projects further east on Fort Union. I, I, I think we could probably do eight feet, we may check in with the applicant. But I, you know, initially there were trees there and we felt like, so just to explain the reasoning, that there is a little strip, as you can see, the property line is just slightly behind the back of sidewalk, and so we felt like there would be enough room to widen to six feet without needing to require additional right-of-way from, or frontage from the property owner. After the discussion with the ARC, now that, as you mentioned, the trees are moving back, there is some additional room that we weren't planning for before, and so I, I, I think that's a good comment, probably something that we can bring up with the applicant to get their sense of whether that would be acceptable, I, I feel like that is consistent with our Fort Union plan. The, the parks plan that we're gonna be reviewing tonight does have, it does call for a trail along Little Cotton Creek. Hasn't been adopted yet, and so I'm, I'm not sure, and maybe Mike, if you wanna jump in, you can, but I, I don't know that we have anything that we can require it yet. I don't know that we have anything that we can require it yet. Um, also it, well, I, I guess, I guess that's really the answer is that, um, I don't think we have anything in the code that would specifically allow us to, but it would also probably be just maybe a voluntary thing, or if they wanted to have, you know, include some sort of future easement or something maybe, but we don't have anything in the code right now. I don't know if Mike, if that's fair to say, if you have any.
Yeah, it is. So our requirements for, you know, improvements and trail connections and things like that stems from, um, those improvements being identified and adopted in master plans. We don't have that yet. It's, Andy's right. It's not something we can strictly require. Being said, it is something we're interested in and we can talk to the applicant about and see if there's a willingness to partner or work together, try to find an opportunity for that. But it's not something that's, that's a codified requirement that we can hold approval on. Um, you know, if they don't provide. So something we, we'd be very interested in working towards to see if there's any opportunity. And you know, if, if that's the commission's direction, I, you know, I think that's, that's very reasonable as we proceed to the next steps of this project in the review. I just don't know that there's enough there to require that.
I, I would have to go, I'm sorry. I have so much to say about this, but I'm quite excited to see this happen.
Speak up if you guys have feeling.
Yeah, I think we're all having internet connection issues here tonight in Cottonwood Heights. Try again, Dan, see if we can hear you.
I can't hear him. Well, I've got one more comment.
I would love to own on this guy's to agree that this is some, appreciate that this is in codified to their property. And even though the walk by traffic as we start, I mean, with these kinds of projects, I think you have to start somewhere. And this is, this would be potentially the entryway into, uh, a nice little walking path through basically what's surrounding it is a cement wasteland. And I mean, I think this is the beginnings of, uh, helping the, the larger property owner behind these guys to see that uh, Cottonwood Heights wants to, wants to do something that's beneficial. And I don't know what that looks like. And I, I, I realize that we can't make them do it necessarily or put it on there as a condition necessarily. But even in good faith, looking for ways that we might be able to partner on this. I think this would be the.
I think, I think we got you, Dan. You're breaking up again. I'm sorry. Um, and I'm going to try and I think we might all have these issues tonight, or those of us that are being affected by whatever's going on. Um.
I still have one more comment.
Go ahead.
You had a, uh, an existing land or a landscape thing there, Andy. Could you put that back on for me? That one, uh, that one's fine. Dan Mills is still trying to talk, but he's not, Dan, you're just not coming through. Um, on the, uh, drive through exit, there's an existing tree, a big green one that's right there on the right hand side of the exit. It also looks like it may be an existing tree and in the, in the river. If, if that impedes traffic, who's responsible to make that so that it does not impede the traffic visually?
Well, I, I think that the property owner would be responsible. For something that's existing, I'd probably recommend maybe trimming the branches up to a certain height. And I, I can't remember specifically. I think maybe seven, seven and a half feet. There, there is a height in the code that we require if there's something's blocking.
Right. And I, and look, I didn't go down and, and drive out that driveway because right now you have to back up to a dumpster and then play like you're coming out of the, um, out of the drive through. And, and it may not even be an issue. I'm just looking at it on the map and, and, uh, uh, you're not trying to make that a ride only out of there, or is that ride only? I can't see. It says an arrow just says exit. Is that a ride only?
It, I don't think it is now, but that is something that will be assessed by the city engineer and we've discussed. He is going to request some additional information from the applicant and then determine, you know, based on the numbers.
Well, it's really quite away from Union Park. I mean, if you think about how far away that is, I, my little Honda can get up to speed pretty quick by the time I'm down that far. It, so it's not right on the corner. So there, there's probably room for, uh, some left, but suggested right turn or something. But if that tree's blocking the vision, that's a problem. And if the tree's in the creek, I'm in Utah, so it's a creek, not a creek. If, if the tree's in the creek, then who, who, I mean, certainly we can't make this landowner go trim that tree. And, and the, the, who owns the river?
Generally those creeks are, uh, Salt Lake County flood control. Under their jurisdiction, it is still on this, this owner's property. So it, it would probably end up having to be a, uh, you know, working through the property owner and county flood control to resolve those types of hazards.
Have saw, do travel.
The, this particular tree at the front, which I think you're talking about, I'm just looking on the street view and it, it's, it seems pretty clearly on one side of the property. So where, where the trunk is shown here, I think is pretty accurate. The, the creek runs just parallel to this property line, but it's over a little ways. Okay. Property owner is the, I think it's listed as.
So if he's, so if it's blocking the view, we at least have somebody other than, call Salt Lake County flood control. That's, that's a number no one ever answers, but at least we have an owner here that we can say the tree's blocking and the city ordinance, uh, could take care of that. That's good. Thank you. Sorry, Chris. That's way more than I wanted to bring up.
So, so just to wrap up on Commissioner Mills' comments, I, I think we agree. Um, you know, in the appropriate manner, we, we will absolutely discuss, you know, any opportunity to collaborate or partner on, on, you know, easements or trails or any improvements that, that help achieve our goals. It'd be outside of the, you know, the entitlement of this plan and meeting ordinance standards, but that's something I, I think we're all in agreement on that we're interested in. So if there's an opportunity, we'll explore it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then we have open space on our agenda as well, Andy.
Correct. Yes. Um, and I, I guess we have a few minutes. Do you want me to, I can give just a quick update on that?
Yeah, update for anything new from, from last go around. And then maybe because we have Lucy just joining us for the first time tonight and, and Jessica hasn't been as immersed yet in the open space plan, um, through the planning commission anyway.
Sure. Yes. So we, to give, uh, just general overview, uh, city is working on a parks, trails and open space master plan. This has been, uh, with the work in progress for actually a number of years. We've had open houses spanning back, I think to 2017, maybe 2018 and 2019 for sure. We had some open houses to public comment. And, uh, now getting to a place where we're preparing final document, still in draft form, but we really want to get public input. General, uh, overview is that it takes inventory of our existing parks, trails and open space, and then makes recommendations for the future areas where new open space opportunities, either for preservation of hillside or places where through redevelopment, we could add things like, uh, plazas or parkways, pedestrian walkways with open space. So I'll, and I'll give just a quick overview. So we have a document, a PDF. As I said, is still a work in progress and looking for comments and feedback on. And then um, we also have this interactive map, which contains most of the same information, same maps. So we have, uh, on the right hand side, you can click through um, different tabs to see different maps. We have existing open space, which um, not only maps out the city parks, but also neighboring city and regional parks. It also includes, uh, you know, these little red ones are like HOA space, apartment, open space. We have semi-public open space, which includes golf courses, uh, cemetery, and then, um, we have, uh, school and church open space, the other ones. So it's all mapped out, just to give a sense of what services, which areas and where we might want to see improvement. We've got some recommendations. As I said, uh, the big ones are east side, open space preservation. Preservation of the hillside is something that's been expressed numerous times by residents and by, uh, Parks Committee, by your commission and by the city council. And then we have a couple others, um, that through development in the future could provide opportunities for either small, just open, open spaces or, uh, like I said, like, like a plaza or some nice amenity that, um, the public could enjoy when projects develop along Fort Union and in the gravel pit in the Old Mill area. I've got some, uh, information about those recommendations that you can read through. And then we did the same thing for trails. So we have our existing trails, which we, we tried our best to map not only the main trails in the city, which are Crestwood Park, uh, the East Jordan Canal by Mountview Park. Um, and then we've got this trail system, the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, which connects into the Mill Hollow Park and around the corporate center, and then the Ferguson Canyon Trail. We also have a few little spots of different neighborhood connections that are accessible to the public. Now we've got a future trails map, which includes just a really any potential option for trails anywhere in the city. There's really a lot of opportunity here for new trail heads and trail connections. Not only through, you know, on the east side, on the hillside and connecting to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, but also as was just discussed, along Little Cottonwood, uh, creek, spanning the entire length of the city and then up into the commercial area we were just looking at. We've also got, um, urban trails, uh, proposed along Wasatch Boulevard, Fort Union, these bike lanes that we were discussing earlier. Potential for a trail along I-215 continuation of the East Jordan Canal Trail. It's a lot of big ideas for connections throughout the city that have been proposed here. And, uh, we've separated out to just different areas that comprise of multiple neighborhoods that surround certain activity points for people to click through and look at what's going on in there in the woods. I won't go through each one right now in the interest of time. But then we've got some information about how these projects can be funded in the future through the city budget, through additional fees, through a bond. And, uh, you know, all sorts of other programs and donations. And then, uh, a comment section, I actually just checked, we, we haven't had any comments come through yet. It is kind of buried in here to be fair, but in our last meeting in February, the commission, I, I think we had like one or maybe two public comments. And so the commission recommended that the city, um, put it out in the newsletter. And so there was a newsletter article this month, um, that directed people to our draft plans page on the city website. It includes information about this as well as our other plans. And so, um, we're hopeful that because of that, more people will now know about this, maybe submit comments. My email was included in that newsletter article. And so, uh, we're hopeful that maybe people will have some comments tonight, or if not, that they'll read the newsletter and submit their feedback that way.
Andy, that, that's a question I have for you is, you know, how useful and, and are you getting the input, which you sort of just answered? I mean, that's part of the reason we keep these open on the planning commission agenda for so long is to encourage, um, public participation, which is, you know, a little different now that we've gone to this Zoom format, but still, um, if it's not useful, I, I, we don't want to impede it, you know, as, as Commissioner Mills brought up. It's really important to get this thing going so that we can start implementing it and, um, as these properties come up for different things.
Correct. Yeah. So our, our plan is, uh, tonight, you know, we, we wanted to leave it open, um, see if anyone, you know, interested from the newsletter or otherwise has comments. If not, um, you know, that may be a good sign that, you know, people don't have major problems with it. Um, and so we can just move forward. And so depending how tonight goes, if there are any major concerns or major changes that are requested, we can just move forward with making the finishing touches and finalizing things. And then hopefully at the next month, formally adopted.
Sounds good. Yeah. I think, I mean, I think we want to have, we want to be that, that place where people can come and talk about it and hear about it and get educated about it, but we also don't want to slow it down.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, knowing that we're nearly at time and people are having internet connection issues, me included, um, I would entertain a motion to close the, the work session so we can transition over to our business meeting.
And move, we close this meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded all in favor?
Aye.
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 I see in a few minutes at the business meeting.